Is there a motion on the minutes?
Move for approval.
Second. Second, any additions or corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $376,459.67.
Is there a motion for the bills?
I'd make a motion to approve the bills.
The motion?
Second.
Second, any comments on the bills? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item four are reports. The South Dakota Department of Transportation Executive Order Number 2015-1 showing additions and deletions to the Minnehaha County Highway System. That has been received and is placed on file in the auditor's office. And the South Dakota Department of Game Fish and Parks 2014 Wildlife Damage Management Program. And the report has been received and is also on file in the auditor's office.
No?
Item five is personnel actions. A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
Is there a motion on routine actions?
So move.
The motion and a second. And a second, are there any questions for Carrie? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item B is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for February 2015. Carrie Dever.
Good morning. Carrie Dever from Human Resources. We have a shorter list today for employee anniversaries for February. And just as a reminder, we recognize employees who are celebrating either five, 10, 15, 20 increments of five years. This month, we have Brittany Crawford at the Juvenile Detention Center celebrating five years of service. We have Dan Kaiser at the jail, and Art Borden at the treasurer's office, both celebrating 10 years of service. And we have Patricia Albrecht as a CO in the jail, celebrating 20 years of service. So our thanks and appreciation go out to those individuals.
And none of them here today? None of them are here today?
Who's coming with us today?
Okay.
Item C is to record volunteers and county departments for January 2015.
Another long list for January, 240 for the month, or approximately 240, serving in six different departments of the county. So again, much appreciation to those individuals, a lot of hours.
Any comments? Okay.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
The next item is application for abatement. Diane Ripuma.
Good morning, Diane Rip, my equalization office. I have several applications for abatement today. The first one is Jeannie Dooley, Record Number 73109. This was an owner occupied status that was removed, and the applicant is requesting the difference between non-owner occupied and owner occupied, in the amount of $1,010.47.
Are there any questions on that? Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
The motion, second. Motion and a second to approve the application for abatement, Number 73109. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
The next ones are all the city apart from, they purchased some lots. I'll do them all, and then apparently you'll have to make one motion. 23393 for $170.31. Record 23394, $95.23. 23395, $95.23. 23415, $106.89. And the last one is 23416 for $210.09.
Okay. Are there any questions on those? And take a motion for all five of those Hartford properties?
I'll make a motion.
Have a motion, is there a second?
No.
A second, any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven is notice and requests. A is to authorize a county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for two combination dump truck-salt-spreader combination body units for the Highway Department, Shannon Schultz.
Good morning, Commissioner. Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent. DJ is away at the legislature today, doing some engineering and lobbying. So this item is closely related to Item 14, later in the agenda. So this is a purchase of basically our big dump trucks. The chassis is one unit, and then the dump body is a second unit. Excuse me, that's number, that's 14.
The chassis is item number 13.
13, thank you.
Yeah.
So in the past, I guess I'll just introduce this by talking about our truck program. You know, we get a new truck in, and we phase those through a system of different stages. You know, its primary purpose is to haul snow and sand in the wintertime, and then asphalt and dirt in the summertime. So those are our heavy lifting units. And they go through their kind of main purpose in life to do that, and then they get phased out. They go into a staging area, which we call reserve trucks or spare trucks. And then just before they go out to the final pasture and get declared a surplus, they're used as a water truck. And we're going to cover some of those today. I'll talk about the water truck first, which is going to be going out of service. It's a 1998 International. It has 220,791 miles on it. And eventually, we'll declare that as a surplus. And it's 17 years old. There's a pretty detailed list of things that Mr. Bennigan had requested of DJ, and I think I'll just read that, because it's fairly comprehensive, especially from Mr. Bender. Commissioner Bender? So we currently have four plow trucks that are in poor condition, 546, 544, 550, and 551. The two new plow trucks will be assigned to plow routes. At the time of delivery of the new trucks, the two worst trucks, which are 550 and 551, would be taken off of their plow route assignments. Of the two worst trucks, one would be moved to a spare slot, which is previously held by 527, but until its frame broke, and then it was taken out of service and subsequently sold on Iron Planet. The remaining truck will replace our existing water truck, which I mentioned, 523. The dump sander will be removed in the plow truck, the flatbed, and will be removed from 523, and installed in the new plow truck. The dump sander and 523 chassis will then be declared a surplus. The surplus value of 523 chassis and the dump sander from 551 are unknown at this time. The plow truck 527 sold on Iron Planet this winter, sold for $8,000. So the amount expected for 523 and the dump sander combined would likely be between $5,000 and $8,000.
Are there any questions for Shannon on this? I have one question, Shannon. We're going to let for bids, if this is approved, let for bids on those trucks, the salt-sander combination body units, if... I totally forgot what I was going to ask you about it. Never mind, because I don't remember what it was. It was something about the combination, so never mind. Commissioner Bennigan?
Maybe I can remember part of the conversation. Shannon, if we were to wait and do this a few months from now, do we still have the opportunity to bid from that department list?
Yes, that's good for a year.
And the reason I ask that is I've got a concern about, frankly, the conversations that we've had in the last couple of weeks about the number of bridges that we've got that need to be repaired, where we're at in that list, how many we're going to get done, where the legislature's at, all those things that have not been solidified. If we were to wait in this particular transaction and find out more about what's going to happen in the legislature, frankly, what's going to be prioritized on that bid list that we need to develop a policy on, we could use those same dollars for, frankly, transferring these dollars to a bid or a bridge project rather than doing an equipment project.
That's correct.
And I think that it would be wise for us to defer this for a couple of months till we know exactly where we're at with all those unknowns right now.
That's what happened last year. We had a heavy construction season last year. The two trucks that we were supposed to purchase last year got deferred to this year.
Right.
And so that would happen again. There's a risk to do that, and that is because there's such a lead time on the chassis and the trucks that we probably couldn't, if we did do that, we probably couldn't get those trucks in service until sometime later in the year, December, January. So it kind of would impair our abilities to use those trucks this year, you know, later in '15 when we got to start snow plowing again. Just mention that 2013 bid was the last time that we did this, and we got two new trucks. And the trucks were themselves $112,811 each, and the bodies were $74,365 each, for a total of $187,176 each. And it would take some time for all that stuff to come in, get assembled, and then we take it, and then we add wings, blades, electronics, and lighting. And so the total cost comes in around $200,000 each, which is about $5,500 more per truck than it was three years ago, or two years ago. So it's, you know, a little bit inflation there.
Commissioner Bennigan?
Shannon, I don't disagree with what you said at all, but I'm willing to take some risk with the need for bridges being a higher priority than the need for trucks at this point. And yes, there's a possibility that you won't get them all together and assembled for the first snowstorm. But if we have to deal with some bridges that we didn't expect to, because frankly, the legislature doesn't do what we're expecting that they're going to do, I think that it's in our best interest, frankly, to defer this.
Commissioner Kelly?
Would you go over again what condition these two trucks that you're going to replace?
Conditions of the trucks that are likely to be replaced with these two new trucks. I mentioned 523, which is not currently being used as a plow truck, but that's our water truck, so that's kind of the final pasture before it gets surplused. That has, it's a 1998 International. It has 220,790 miles on it. And it's really ready to go. The two trucks that this would more likely have been placed in our existing service lineup is a 550. It's, truck number is 550. It's a 2002 Sterling. It has 154,125 miles on it. Its annual maintenance cost is $6,086. And we would keep this truck as a spare. That would replace the one that we're going to move into the water truck next. 551 is also a 2002 Sterling. Oh, excuse me, that 550 would stay as a spare. The 2002 Sterling with 141,000 miles would become the new water truck. Its annual maintenance cost is $5,433 per year in maintenance. So that's, those are the two trucks more than likely that would replace, we would replace those with the two new trucks. And, you know, barring anything weird happening through the summer, you know, major breakdowns, that's more than likely what would happen.
And the spare, what, that would be a truck you don't have right now as a spare truck? Is that correct?
It would be parked as long as every other truck was healthy. For example, today, we're down three trucks. There was a water tank problem. We have antifreeze in the oil coming out the muffler, and another one, and there's a third one. Tom, are you here?
Yes.
The third problem is what?
My name's Tom Peterson. I'm the fleet supervisor.
You better come up, you better come up, Tom. Introduce yourself again.
Rust is our biggest problem with these trucks to keep alive.
Tom?
You have to introduce yourself again, sorry, Tom.
I'm Tom Peterson. I'm the fleet supervisor for Minnehaha County. Yeah, we have three trucks broke down today. One truck has, it's an International, it has antifreeze coming out the exhaust. And we have another truck with a cat motor, which was 0550, which we should have got rid of last year, but now it's got antifreeze in the oil, which is going to be, have to be overhauled. It's going to be a very expensive job to rebuild. And we have one truck now that has wing problems, which is down, and we have one with no air, and a truck with no lights. Actually, there's four trucks out of service today. We can't cover the plow routes completely.
And these are all plow trucks?
These are all plow trucks, yeah.
So what kind of effect did it have on this last snowstorm?
It just takes longer to plow. We actually pretty lucky, this last storm, it blew so much that there really wasn't a lot of snow on the road.
And it's not going to snow today.
Yeah. If you weren't lucky to have the snowbank in front of your place, you were okay.
Are there any other questions?
If we wait two months to get these trucks, we won't have them for use for this next winter. It just takes so, we're really pushing it now to have trucks put together for next winter.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Shannon or Tom? Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I want to make a motion to defer for two months.
I have a motion to defer on the bid letting for the dump truck-salt-spreader combination. Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Is there another motion?
I would move to approve authorizing to go to bid.
Okay.
Am I correct on that?
Yeah, a motion to authorize them to go to bid. Is there another, for publishing a bid? Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. That means it's deferred to next week automatically? Is that right, Ken?
There's no vote taken.
There's no vote taken, so it's...
So automatic defer unless it's a tie vote.
Okay, so it'll just come back at a later date?
Not necessarily next week.
Unless there's another motion.
I'm going to move to defer to next week.
I have a motion to defer to next week. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to defer till next week. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one to defer to next week. Thank you.
Thank you.
Planning and zoning notices. Item A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County to rezon from A1 Agricultural-Seas Commercial, the north 150 feet of property legally described as Track 3A Francis Trax, southwest quarter, Section 7, Township 102 North, Range 49 West. Kevin Hookman.
Kevin Hookman, County Planning and Zoning. This is a rezoning request, Number 1501, to rezon from A1 Agricultural-Seas Commercial. This particular ground is about two acres on the north half of this site that's shown here, on the northeast corner of the Crookshrenner exit. Most of the property is currently zoned commercial, and this is going to be rezoning the remaining of the site. So the, this is the first hearing, and the request is to authorize the auditor publish notice, public hearing, on February 24, 2015, at or after 9:15 a.m. at the next Minnehaha County Commission meeting.
This is just to authorize the auditor to publish notice? Is there a motion? Commissioner Kelly?
I have a question, Kevin. Why are there no maps on our Dropbox stuff? I don't see any maps or any, any aerials of, including that one right there, for instance.
I must have just failed to send that attached part to it. This would be the map. I'll send that right away.
Well, it's just, when we're doing this at home, it's nice to know what's coming up on the meeting. And, you know, the Highway Department links in. I don't know why we planning can't too with, through pictometry.
Do we have a motion to authorize the county auditor to publish notice?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any other questions or comments for Kevin? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item B is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice of hearing to consider an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County to rezon from A1 Agricultural District to I1 Light Industrial District for property legally described as Track 1, Souls Edition, southeast quarter, southeast quarter, Section 22, Township 102 North, Range 48 West. David Heidel.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Heidel, Planning Department. The applicant submitted a request to rezon a strip of land, which is directly across the railroad tracks from Midwest Rail Car Manufacturing. This one's located, the rezoning's from A1 to I1 Light Industrial. It's the plot of land where the Corson Elevator presently stands, just for your reference. Staff requests that a public hearing of February 24, 2015 be set. The Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of rezoning 1502. The map and a copy of the minutes from the January 26, 2015 Planning Commission meeting were attached for your review. So action needs to be taken to authorize the auditor to publish notice of the meeting on February 24 at 9:20 a.m. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions for David?
I'm just curious, who is the applicant?
The applicant is Corson, I think it's Corson Properties LLC. Ben Soules was a contact for that business.
Is there a motion to authorize publication of notice?
Move for approval.
I have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, David.
There are no petition for compromise of lien today. The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
This is an opportunity for anyone to speak on any subject you would like that is not on the agenda today. Seeing none, we can move on.
Regular business. Item 10 is a briefing from the City of Sioux Falls on proposed TIF Project 19, workforce housing project in downtown Sioux Falls, and proposed amendment to TIF Project 16. Brent O'Neal.
Okay. Okay. There you go. I think they were at all of them. Do you have one?
Good morning. Darren Smith, Director of Community Development for the City of Sioux Falls. You know, as I was watching the first few minutes here, the thought that came to me was, I wish the ratings for these meetings and the city council meetings were higher. I wish the numbers of people watching were greater, and the people here in the audience was greater, because, you know, the issue over the trucks versus the bridges and those things and prioritizing, you know, those are not easy decisions, and those are the types of discussions and decisions being made with county government, city government, and school district. I served on the city council a few years. You have a current, a couple current commissioners who are city council members. I spent a couple of years on the elementary school budget committee for the school. And I always tell people, if there's waste in government in Sioux Falls, in Minnehaha County, or the Sioux Falls School District, I haven't found it yet. And I've been involved in a lot of the budgeting processes. Well, the reason we're here today is, really, is to provide an update and some information on a potential TIF project that, at this time, we are supporting, and we would anticipate moving through the process. But we want to do more than just provide a few slides and some information on that, on the TIF project. One of the things that we really want to do a better job of with these TIF projects, and tax increment financing in general, and how the city administers that tool, we want to do a better job of communicating and educating, not only with the county, but the media and the public. So that's something, you know, that we began to recognize, I'd say as far back as a couple of years ago. And so we've been trying to make efforts. As you know, we've met with some of you one-on-one. We've met with members of the media and others to try and educate. But again, in hindsight, I think we could have done more. Hindsight's 2020. But we could have done more, we could have done better. And so all we can do now is look ahead and try and do that. So what we have today, and we understand it's informational, and you've got a lot of things on your agenda, so we'll be brief. But I'd like to touch on a few slides and just try to educate a little bit and communicate as far as, you know, how do we see tax increment financing, and how does the city utilize it as a tool, and what goes into our decision-making? And again, we'll be brief compared to other presentations we've made on that. And then Parts Two and Three, Brent, the Economic Development Manager, Brent O'Neal, in our office, will come up and talk more specifically about what would be TIF 19, that project, an affordable housing project in downtown Sioux Falls. And then the possibility for an amended TIF, a TIF that was approved, oh, about two and a half years ago, again, for a large affordable housing development on the east side of Sioux Falls, kind of east of downtown, that it did not, it did not launch. It did not take off, but now we have a group back to look at resurrecting that, and it may or may not be, need to be amended. We don't know yet, but we want to get on the front end in communicating that. So let me just jump in here. This is, again, we tried to create slides, so it isn't just somebody up here doing a lot of talking, or, you know, a novel that we hand out. Because the reality is, tax increment financing, I suppose, can be as complex and as complicated as you want to make it. But most people don't have a natural interest in it, they just don't. And yet, we need to educate. So this is one that we put together to help our own city council and the media and others understand, well, what goes into our decision-making process at the staff level when these TIF requests or TIF projects walk in the door? And that's usually how it happens. A private developer or entity will come into our office and want to talk about a project they have that they feel is a great project for the community, but it needs help. It has a financial gap, it has some other challenges. That's always, almost always, how it starts. And then we begin the process from there. And that process is almost always, again, several meetings. It's not over a matter of days or even weeks. It's usually months. Sometimes it'll take a full year before we even get to the point where we are today. And that's actually the case, more or less, with the TIF 19 project. But those things, you know, starting on the left and working to the right, there's four critical buckets or areas there. And we don't always look at each TIF request or potential TIF project necessarily in this sequence from left to right. But these four things have to be there every time. Some things we look at, for one, the necessity. So there has to be a financial gap. And just so you know, when we go through these projects, you know, we challenge the other side, the development team, the project, ask them lots of questions about the financials involved with the project, the cost of the project, where is their gap? But it goes way beyond that. They're required to submit the pro formas they have, their business plan, all the financials involved with that project, the construction costs, if there's environmental remediation, those types of things, they have to submit those to us. So we dig into the numbers at a pretty deep level. One of the other things we've added to the process, we just haven't added TIF to try it, but we're going to going forward, is we're going to involve other outside professionals to help as well. So personally, do I think we've done a really good job looking at these numbers and getting honest answers and confirming, yes, there's a financial gap in those that we've approved? I do. I think we have a good staff who's gotten pretty good at this stuff. But we're going to bring in an outside third party that we already have under contract to do this. We've seen them serve in an owner's rep role for the city on other projects, and so they have that architect and construction and real estate development background. So they can look at the proposed expenses that a developer would tell us, and they can, they can raise a red flag, or they can say, yeah, that's about right in the current bidding environment. So just so you know, that's another layer that we've added to the process, and we will going forward. But there always has to be a financial gap. That's usually what, almost always, if not always, there has to be some kind of financial gap or challenge, and you'll see that in these TIF projects. The use of money. So that's changed over the years. A few years ago, and Todd Meyer Henry's in the audience today, Todd knows, he was essentially the author of, I hope I'm not giving him too much credit by saying that, the author of TIF legislation a few years ago that really changed the use of TIF dramatically, as far as how cities and counties and those entities that have that ability can use TIF. Now, we haven't really followed that path, but it opened it up toward, before you had to identify specific TIF-eligible expenses, typically, those are things that had some kind of public benefit. Now, we have, we have basically stayed the course with that philosophy and approach. But the way the legislation was changed is it opened that up greatly, where now you can provide economic development grants for the full amount of increment or any amount up to that point that you want to just make the project happen. And there's not necessarily a requirement to identify specific expenses. I don't know if others across the state have used it that way yet. I'm guessing some have, but we really, we really haven't. Now, in our TIF plans, that's more of a summary. As you get to those TIF expenses, you may see where our legal justification for a TIF is an economic development grant, and the reason is because the attorneys have told us that's the safest way to justify a TIF. But you'll see in the document itself and any explanations we give, we go way beyond that. And we still kind of do it the old-school way of identifying those expenses and ensuring there's a public benefit associated with each. So that's where we look at the use of money. The other two, you know, is where it gets, it starts to get a little more subjective, the significance and impact. Again, we look at these projects, these projects, there has to be some kind of unique benefit or compelling reason for the community, for us to not only support a project, but especially the TIF. You know, we have other ways of supporting projects, a lot of different ways. But when we're talking about TIF and sometimes significant amount of money, there's got to be a really compelling reason for that project, us to see that project come to fruition, that we would take the additional step of considering TIF or approving TIF. And then... And then lastly, situational factors. This is, I suppose, a catch-all. What are, what are any and all other things you would, you would utilize in your decision-making process to, to decide to support a TIF and recommend it for approval to the city council? Just one example I would use is the timing or the current economy, market conditions. So for example, four years ago, we may have been more inclined when these TIF projects came in. We still would use all those other three buckets, but we might be more inclined in a, in a struggling economy or down economy to spur private investment and private development, to make good things happen, to help expand the tax base. And also understand, these projects, you know, it isn't just about the project themselves. The idea is that it spurs development around it, which grows the tax base for all of us. And that's critical. That, that's what you, that's what you need. I'm guessing the county's largest source of revenue is property tax revenue. I don't know that for a fact. I'm guessing it is and probably by, by far.
Yeah.
What that means to you, I guess if I were in your shoes, is you need an expanding tax base to help you keep up with costs and you need your cities to do that, right? So it's very important, not only what these projects do, but what it spurs around them for additional development and expanding that tax base. But the economy has, has an impact. Right now, the economy is very strong in Sioux Falls and we've made it clear when these potential projects and development teams come in that, you know what, guys? The bar's always been high for TIF projects. I guess that's our feeling. But it's even higher now because we have a real strong economy. People are making all kinds of private investments on their own. So the bar's even a little higher. The last item at the bottom also is something I think is greatly misunderstood, and that is how we determine the level of TIF supported. And it really does tie back to those first two areas. What is that financial gap? And then what would those dollars go for? So for example, if you've got a project that would hypothetically increase the tax revenue by five million, property tax revenue by $5 million over the life of a TIF. If a project is TIF-worthy and we want to get behind it, that doesn't mean all $5 million can just automatically, or would, $5 million would go to that project. And the reason I hesitate when I said it can't go, I have to catch myself again with the state law change, it could go, but that's not the way we do it. For us, it would still tie back to what's the financial gap and where will those dollars be spent? There's got to be some kind of public benefit and typically direct public benefit that we feel is, meets the smell test and is beyond reproach. So that's really what goes into our decision-making process. This is, this is a slide that we've started to use, and I know on the surface it looks a little convoluted and complicated. It's actually not, I don't think. What I would say on this, to understand again exactly how a TIF district works, if you start in the upper left-hand corner with that first box, TIF boundary is created and the base value, the assessed value by your equalization office is established. So take any project before, at the time that the TIF is approved for a project that's going to happen, we communicate very closely with the Office of Equalization, with, with the county, and the base value, in other words, what is the value that it's being taxed at today? That is the base value that is then established. Well, then if you jump down to the bottom, on the left-hand side, that box, property taxes collected from the base valuation continue to go to the city, county, school district. There's also sometimes a water district or other taxing entities in a TIF district. But those dollars continue to go to those entities throughout the life of the TIF. And so that's where you can see the arrow stops just short of the increment, all right? So that's a really important one that whatever the city, county, and school district is getting for property tax revenue on a site where a TIF project has been approved, you continue to get that. All entities continue to get that. We get that question. I've tried to do a better job when we have folks in our office or in the media or public who say, you know, well, what does it take? Or who loses what? And again, this might be a little perspective or he said, my perspective's a little different than, than maybe, maybe yours, but I firmly believe, you know, a TIF district doesn't take anything. You don't lose anything. You continue to get what you've always received. You just don't get the increment from the project. That's the deferred benefit from that project. And we'll talk about that in just a second. Then if you jump back up top in the middle, you can see the additional property taxes collected from the increased valuation due to improvements go to the TIF. So when there is, let's just take an apartment project, when that TIF district is approved and the base value, the base assessed value of that property is established by the county, then there's a new value that's established when a project, you know, at first it's speculative to help build the TIF district, but then when it's built, you reassess as you do with, you know, all properties throughout the county, but especially when there's new construction. So then you establish a new value. Obviously, the taxes that something valued here versus here is going to generate, okay? So that's that, I don't know what color that is, but we're the tax increment, TOPE or whatever, that's the increment, the additional taxes, okay? So that's the increment. A portion of that, and sometimes all of it, over the life of the TIF then go back into reimbursing for some TIF-eligible expenses that we've identified on the front end and agreed with the development, the private development team in that project, what those will and will not be. That increment becomes a reality when they pay their property taxes. Now they have this new project, new building in place, they begin paying property taxes, those dollars are grabbed or flagged at the county level, put in a TIF fund, and then it can go in different directions from there. It depends on the agreement. But at the end of the day, 30,000-foot level, those dollars go where they're instructed to go. So if it goes to a bank, if it goes to an LLC or whatever the case may be that we've agreed to in advance, it goes to pay those TIF-eligible expenses to help make that project a reality. Then on the, on the far right, again, if you actually go to the bottom again, after the TIF district is dissolved, all property taxes collected are distributed. So again, that's once the TIF district has been satisfied. So if we agree there's $3 million in TIF-eligible expenses and that was the gap, that's what the TIF was approved for. Once that 3 million is satisfied, whether it's five years, 10 years, 15 years, or 20 years, which is a maximum allowed by state law for a TIF district, whatever that period of time is, and they vary for all of them, then that TIF district is considered satisfied, dissolved, goes away. That's when the deferred benefit comes in, the significant increase in property tax revenue for school district, city, county, and anyone else. Okay, just a few common questions or terms, again, that, that we find that come up. I've already talked about the, the first one. Everybody continues to get the same amount of funding they did before a TIF project was approved. I think that's a big misconception, not with you folks, but it is in the public and media. I know it is because we get that question. The deferred benefit, that's the term we use for the increment that we're all waiting to receive. That's one of the reasons you do this project, TIF project, in addition to the development that spurs around it, that isn't supported by a TIF district. And there's an immediate benefit when the tax base grows that way. The third term is developer-funded TIF. I think this is another real common misperception out there that somehow the city, county, or school district or government somehow, if a TIF is approved, we write a check to that entity or for that project. And that does, that never happens, doesn't happen. We do have the ability to do publicly funded TIFs. There's only one, I'm personally aware of, that Sioux Falls has done, and that was a small publicly funded TIF for Shropshire Place several years ago. I think it was a few hundred thousand dollars. Don't quote me on that, but I think that was the public, public portion. The, the term developer-funded TIF, what this means is the developer or the private project entity or team, they provide all the funding for these projects, all of it. They provide all the funding. Oftentimes, that's through financing, which means loans, investors that they go out and seek to invest in their projects, and of course, they, they have to pay them back. So they provide all the dollars and they take all the risk on these. If the TIF district, for whatever reason, fails or doesn't provide the increment or whatever they need, it is 100% their risk, period. There's no risk for, for us in these. Okay, just what are some of those common expenses? And this is just in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Every city can do these a little differently. But in Sioux Falls, we went back and looked at each of the TIFs we've approved that our staff has personally and directly been involved with. I'm guessing this is probably true for the TIFs approved before that time, which was 2010 as well. These are the three main buckets. If you added up all those TIF-eligible expenses we've allowed for in current and ongoing projects, this is what you would find. They're typically in cleaning up the environments. You have an environmentally contaminated site, some of course, more than others. You don't always know what you're getting into until you get into that site, so it's got to be flexible and fluid. But these are the types of things. The disposal cost would be dirt if you've got contaminated soil. We deal with that a lot downtown. We dealt, anticipated dealing with that and are on some level with what's referred to as the Costco site or the Williams Pipeline site. You've got to get rid of that soil. And you can't just take it to the landfill and dump it. It's, it's an expensive process. It just depends on how dirty that soil is. Site preparation and blight removal. So again, demolition of a blighted or, or dilapidated or even condemned structure, grading of a site to make it development-ready. Maybe it's leveling it out or filling or what have you. Site excavation. Then the third is public infrastructure. So streets, sewer and water, utilities, other public improvements. So those things that the city is required, is requiring of this development like we would any, and of course, that adds to the cost of a project. It may be making sure it's done right. Maybe it's upgrading sewer and water lines in areas where they're very old and so forth. So I'm not saying you can't find a single TIF district somewhere that doesn't have something that we've reimbursed for that's outside of these three buckets. It's probably, you probably can. But I can assure you that the lion's share of expenses are in one of these three buckets or all three. Okay, just a little bit summary of our activity with TIFs, and I think this is important too. So just a quick snapshot from January 2010 to really today, the end of 2014, the total building permit value citywide, this is all building permit activity in the city of Sioux Falls. It says 2-plus billion here. I think an almost exact amount would be about $2.35 billion. So, so it even exceeds 2 billion somewhat significantly. The total building permit value of TIF-approved projects of these TIFs that we've approved since 2010, the total building permit value is 140 million. More importantly, the, the real total value of those projects is probably closer to 210 million. The building permit value is always a conservative number that's provided to us for a lot of reasons. But you also factor in with real projects, realities, you have land, costs, other things that don't, FFNE, those things that don't necessarily go into a building permit when they tell us the value of a project. So 210 million in TIF project value that's taken place in the last four years. Now, the last point there, the actual amount of TIF dollars that will be allocated for reimbursable, reimbursable items in these projects, we think right now is going to be approximately $23 million. So when you look at that, $23 million compared to 210 million in the value of projects, and then even bigger, 2.35 billion in total activity. The reason I stress that is, again, there's some people out there who think, well, you know, it's, all these TIFs are driving the economy or driving all this development. Well, it's, it's actually a very, very small amount percentage-wise. Okay, so how does Sioux Falls compare to some other cities? And you can grab lots of different cities and, you know, for different reasons, but we chose these intentionally. You know, we compared Rapid City a lot. So Sioux Falls, you know, about 170,000. Rapid City, the last confirmed census number we have for them is what you see here, but that's a couple of years old. So about 70,000, 74 TIF districts in Rapid City versus 18 in Sioux Falls, and they're significantly smaller. Now, they use that tool differently out there than we do, and I think a lot of us know that. Let's jump down to the bottom. Another city in, in South Dakota, just down the road an hour, Mitchell, 19 TIF districts. Mitchell has actually approved more TIF districts in its history than the city of Sioux Falls. And, you know, they're, they're less than one-tenth our size. And then Omaha, so there's a city that's outside of South Dakota, you know, significantly larger, 309 TIF districts. So again, I know I'm stressing some of these things and I am doing it intentionally, you know, this, this notion that I think some have had about that, you know, maybe the, the city's gotten carried away with TIF or it's some kind of runaway train. I mean, the, these are the numbers. These are the numbers. This is how we've used it. So Sioux Falls has used it conservatively, really by, I think, anyone's standard. Just the last slide I have is, again, some of those process changes that I think it's important for you folks to know. We, as we've been engaged in economic development in these TIF projects over the last nearly five years, we also have seen areas along the way and times where we felt like the process should be better. And we also think that would help with, with your level of scrutiny, our own city council's level of scrutiny, the media, the public, anyone else. That's, that's fair. You know, we welcome that. So we want to make the process better. And the truth is, the city really had no formal process for TIF. It was just a project that would walk in the door, you sat down, you talk about it. If it looked good, felt good, all those things, maybe you'd move forward. While we formalize the process somewhat significantly, but yet not in a way that's burdensome for private development, hopefully. So now we have an application process, information that's required on the front end. There are somewhat considerable fees now that are associated with the application, reimbursing the city for legal expenses and other things that we incur, scrutinizing their expenses. There's a cost to that. They have to pay us for that upfront with these projects or on the front end. Just, you know, the second bullet point there, the city's made a pledge to share information as early as possible, and you can kind of read through some of those bullet points. I won't go through each one. Just also, please understand that everyone has a desire to know things as soon as possible and as much as possible. And, you know, we try to balance that. The best we can do, if we're getting to you and our own city council and others on the front end of a process, because you don't want to read about it in the paper or be told by somebody else, I get that. We completely understand that. We'll get to you earlier, but oftentimes, the earlier, we're going to be a little more limited in what we know yet about the project, all those details. So I still think it's best to get to the entities that want to know early with what we have. And then we'll come back as much as you want. We'll communicate in other ways. So as we learn more and get more details, we'll share those. But our goal at the end of the day with you folks, with the school district, with our own planning commission, city council, and so forth, is to give, is to give at least 30 days' notice anytime there's going to be a TIF request or action requested or something. And we think we can do even much better than that. But again, like I said, it's a balance with early versus later and then how much information, the level of detail that we have. So Brent is up next to jump into the potential TIF projects that we have in front of us now. But are there, are there any questions?
Are there any questions for Darren on his presentation? Commissioner Kelly.
Darren, first, I want to compliment you on, on the process changes.
Yeah.
They're significant from what we've had in the past.
Yeah.
I'm curious about one particular, oh, no, economic development grants.
Yeah.
A grant. I take a grant if something doesn't have to be paid back.
Correct.
So I don't understand the TIF being required to get free money.
Yeah, well, economic development grant, again, Todd would be the expert and he's, he's here because he's involved with one of the Whittier project. But I'm going to say, I'm going to try and say this right, Todd. In layman's terms, in the way I understand it, when you read In layman's terms, in the way I understand it, when you read that change in state law, basically what happens is if a project comes forward and applies for a TIF to us, so they want a TIF, again, for all the reasons we would normally go through, they feel, you know, there's a financial gap, good for the community, direct public benefit, all those things. When we approve a TIF, one of the changes made was we could take the full amount of the increment and provide it to a project as a grant to make that project happen, to help it come to fruition. Doesn't have to be tied to specific TIF-eligible expenses anymore or confined to those amounts.
So they can build a roof as well as a basement. Is that...
Yeah, please.
Yep.
Todd Meyer Henry, Sioux Falls. One of the reasons for the change, the IRS code, for example, say we have a large ag manufacturer coming into the county. They come to the county and say, "We want a slowdown lane for safety for school buses and everything else so that we get our trucks off the county highway." The county says, "Our budget is tapped. We don't have any money, but it's a large facility, it's gonna be good." You could borrow, as a county, tax increment bonds, but if it goes, more than 10% of that borrowing is a private benefit, then under the IRS code, it's a taxable bond. They have one exception, is if you provide a grant to the private developer and they don't have any ability to pay it back, then it's a tax-exempt borrowing. And so that's the reason that it changed. It's a grant as defined in the IRS tax code, which is, doesn't get paid back. It does not necessarily mean that the benefit that is built with tax increment dollars isn't a public asset. It may be that more than 10% of that is being used by a private business and that it would be a taxable borrowing, and so that's the reason it's changed.
Where does the, where does the TIF money go? Into that TIF fund?
How it works is, once you have your base and it's drawn, tax dollars from underneath get paid as they always would.
Yeah.
All the increment taxes, all the improvement taxes are, the taxpayer pays it just like they normally do. They don't see any difference in their tax bill. They pay it to the county. The county gets the tax, the check, splits it, puts the base amount, distributes that to all the taxing districts, takes the increment, sends it to whoever issued, whether it's a county or a city, say it's a city, send it to the city. The city puts it in the tax increment fund, and there's only three things that they can use it for. One, to reimburse themselves. Two, pay as you go into the tax increment district improvements. Or three, pay a tax increment obligation. And that's where the developers enter into a development agreement. They agree to finance it, and the only obligation is the county will provide those funds to the developer up to a certain, either a timeframe or a dollar amount with computed interest.
And then I'm gonna ask, Todd.
Let's go law school to understand this.
Well, and...
It's a lot to go to law school that don't understand it.
That's why I always say, in layman's terms, here's how I understand it and try to communicate. But Todd, I'm gonna ask this, 'cause I think this is also true. With the ability with these economic development grants, so that was one, using a public entity for a public asset. But let's just take the TIF project, the potential TIF project that we have in front of us that Brent's gonna be talking about. We could provide, we could approve a TIF for X amount and provide that to that private project as an economic development grant, correct? Yeah.
That's, that's actual money going to the developer.
No, never, never. And that's something I said earlier, I wanna go back to and make sure. It's, never does money go from us to them. It's all private-funded, and that's that private developer-funded TIF. So if you have a project and you are approved for a TIF, you provide all the money upfront, whether it's cash, money from investors, or you go to a bank, and it's usually all three of those in virtually every project, okay? You provide the dollars just like you would for any other project. You get reimbursed annually through the TIF when you start paying your property taxes. Does that make sense?
Yeah, sorta. And I thought I understood TIFs till today, but...
I'll take your coffee.
And I, you know, I don't object to TIFs, but I, but since I've been on the commission, I understand also that right now, there's about 300, short of $350,000 of our money that's out in TIFs.
Yep.
And the Costco one, for instance, is that TIF still active?
Yes, but...
My understanding was that it, they'd nowhere near spent the money they needed to spend.
Correct. And that's really why, and I know I'm chewing up more time, you probably want, and I, but I really would like to come back as often as you want, because with what Commissioner Kelly said, I thought I understood TIF until Darren showed up. That's not what I was hoping to accomplish. But I, but I think the disconnect there is, again, there's a lot of folks who don't engage in this daily, and I'd be the first to admit, I spent six years on the city council and I'm sure I voted and approved TIFs. I didn't understand TIF at even this much level compared to what we do now, engaging in these on a daily basis. So I think it's good that we're making sure we're separating fact from fiction and understanding, 'cause it's important, but...
Am I wrong in what I said?
Yeah. No, you're not wrong. That's exactly right.
But the Costco TIF will be, when that, and apparently they're waiting till the apartments are finished?
Yes.
And then that TIF will dissolve?
Yes. So what'll happen, like any TIF district, and honestly, I think it's unfair to even refer to it as the Costco district. You know how much increment Costco got? Zero. They've officially declined. They could've had probably a few hundred thousand dollars. They declined. They never wanted a TIF. They wanted a safety net to build on a contaminated site because the experts told us there could be as much as $5 million in environmental remediation, and even Costco can't absorb dollars like that and be profitable. At the end of the day, when the apartments, which are also, you know, we're talking 400-plus apartment units also on that site with Costco, when, when those are built and they start paying property taxes, the life of that TIF district is probably gonna be anywhere from three to five years, Brent?
Right.
Probably three to five years and it'll be all paid back and dissolved, and it's gonna end up being probably 700,000 to 800,000 is the last number.
Why have you, have they spat, is there a restriction on that for particular one to just remediation?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
So, and they didn't run into anything like they expected?
Not as bad. There were some things, there were some issues out there and things where, because that had been in the ground for so long and how that destabilizes soil and, you know, you're building on that soil, there's things you need to do, additional expenses that are incurred to make, to see that site develop. But that's a classic example of one where, you know, the headline was $4.9 million TIF for Costco, and it was really never that. We knew it very likely wouldn't be that. It's gonna end up being probably 700,000 to 800,000 paid back in less than five years for a significant addition of apartments next to Costco. That's the reality. And we really put the screws to everybody on that one. It wasn't just a TIF like we had done before. That one was unique too. It was, it was restricted exclusively to environmental remediation and anything impacted by what was in the soil out there. And even then, it was an 80/20 share, which we have never done before, that the TIF would reimburse for 80% as opposed to 100%. In virtually every TIF I'm familiar with in Sioux Falls, there's 100% reimbursement. When you identify those reimbursable items or project expenses, 100% goes back to the developer. In this case, it was only 80. They had to have 20%. The reason we did that is so, to hold them accountable, so they wouldn't get carried away with saying, "Yep, we need a $500,000 rubber membrane or some kind of cap," when the reality is, they might not really need that. That's going above and beyond, but they're like, "Hey, if we can be reimbursed through the TIF, get 100%, let's do it." By them having to have even 20% and talking to them after, they said that was a very effective addition to that TIF, because it made them think long and hard about some of those things that they probably could've done and been reimbursed for, and it would've been good, but they maybe truly weren't necessary. It was going above and beyond, so...
Well, just, just a couple of comments and then I'll stop. This is an important deal and I think it's worth talking about, but anyway, just under, when we do our growth index, Ken, where are you? Just make sure. When we do our growth, when we get our growth index, we cannot include the value of the TIFs, I believe is, you can shake your head yes or no on that, am I right? When they're doing county growth, the TIFs are not included in that growth, so we're limited there when they do the, if it's 1.5% or 2%. The other thing is that we're kind of an unwilling player in the...
Yeah, I understand.
We, you do it, we have no say one way or the other.
Yeah, I understand.
We have a bill in legislature right now unless something died yesterday.
It's tomorrow.
But we have a bill there, which I believe the city is opposing, that simply asks, simply brings us to the table and lets us be part of the decision process, because we're talking, you know, right now, $350,000 a year in property taxes. I understand it'll come in later, but the TIFs as a rule now are going at 20 years, so we kinda look at a, at a big project and say, "Well, you know..." And I see the TIF area and I guess we'll talk about that afterwards, it's quite large, but, you know, it's gonna be 20 years before we see anything there. Is it gonna add to our costs? You bet. I mean, it is. And this is housing, which will house more people. More people causes us more money that we're not able to find.
Yeah.
So I, I like them. I wish you guys would not, I wish you would support us on the TIF deal, the bill, because it would be an opportunity for us to be at the table. At worst, I can't remember how the bill's written, but at worst, you know, you're losing about 12%, 13% of the tax dollars on that thing, but...
Yep. Well, if I could, just in closing, and I should've wrote those down, there's two or three things I just, 'cause I think it's important, and again, there are some areas where we'll have to agree to disagree. That's okay. I mean, that's healthy. You know, please keep in mind, when you're looking at, okay, something is built and that brings expense, well, that's only one side of the equation. It also spurs development around it, it grows the tax base in other ways. So we try obviously to engage in projects that aren't bringing disproportionate amount of criminals or those things that would add to your burden, because when the city grows, sure, there's expense that comes along with it. I think the city is probably responsible for most of that. The county's portion in the city largely is with the jail, right? When somebody does something wrong. So I like to think that's a very, 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 very small percentage of the folks that wind up there who maybe came to town directly as a result of a TIF project. So there's, there's a revenue and expense side to those. Secondly, when you look at the 300,000, you know, dollar, the annual estimate of those dollars that is in the deferred benefit category for the county, well, again, please understand that with most, if not all of the projects, with the high percentage of them, we truly feel that those projects would not have happened. So those are, those are tax dollars the county and the city and school district would have never received to begin with. Now, we can argue that till the cows come home, and I understand that, and it's very subjective, but that is part of our process, that we come to the conclusion that a project on this site or of that magnitude is not going to happen. And there are a lot of examples, whether it's the Costco site or even Whittier Heights. You can go back, you know, in the entire history of the city of Sioux Falls and see sites that have not developed for one reason or another. Environmental issues, grading issues, location. On Costco's, you've had, you know, 30 to 40 acres, a stone's throw from the busiest street, the retail mecca in South Dakota. Nobody touched it for a quarter of a century. So that's where it moves beyond subjective. That's a reality. So I'd just like you to consider that. You know, a lot of those dollars, maybe not all of them, but, but a lot of them, I don't feel we're losing because we wouldn't have had them to begin with, but you will when the TIF district is dissolved.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly, is there any other comments? Just Darren, just to piggyback off of what Commissioner Kelly said, we just want a spot at the table.
Understand.
We are not opposed necessarily to TIFs, but we should have, we should at least be able to have a say in it, and at this point, we do not.
Yeah, I understand.
Yep. Thank you. You have one more?
Good morning. Brent O'Neill's my name, and thank you for having us. We have two potential projects that we wanna visit with you about, and as Darren said, with our process, we're trying to get to you more on the front end. I think I called Ken within a week of getting our request to get this meeting scheduled. And then one other thing that was in Darren's part, we do require, we are required to give you guys official notice. That's a statutory requirement. So that will be coming as well, and in that, we'll have a memo attached to that, that'll provide all this information and probably even at a deeper level. So you'll have that to review as well, and certainly, any of you can contact us or if you wanna go through Ken's office, do that as well. Our first application under our new process came in late December. It's a housing project in downtown, and I, I've got a couple notes there. I have to tell you right away that those are, those are mislabeled a little bit, so I'll explain that. There's going to be 80 units. They're kinda gonna be divided into two different groups. One will be participating in the state housing program, so those, those units will be slightly below a market rate, and then we'll have others that are really at kinda that base market rate level. We're doing this project, it's called the Tyler Block. It's at approximately 13th Street and 3rd Avenue. When I get a slider to ahead, it'll kinda show you where that, that area is, but it's on a property now with kind of a dysfunctional, obsolete building, and then really just kinda some underutilized, utilize this parking, but really underutilized at this time. Just to give you kind of a snapshot, imagine a parking lot there today, imagine that in the future. This is the project that has come forward to us. And then this is the boundary in a, in the memo, this'll be explained a little bit in greater detail, but there's really three areas within this district that we'd ask you to focus on. The project that's really the impetus for this TIF request is in the red area. In the top of that red area, you can actually see that building and then you can see the parking adjacent to there. So that rendering I just showed you will occur in that area. The developers who are here today, Norm Drake and Kevin Keating, and I'll just put a side note in, one of the things we're trying to do with the communication process as well is invite those guys to these meetings, so if you have any questions directed to those folks, that they can answer those directly as well. They also own the property across Second Avenue in the yellow area, and they have another project planned there in a couple years. And then across 13th Street, there's an existing project there, and the district goes in and that property's included, and what you'll see on an upcoming slide is, because of the timing of when we're creating this district, a lot of that, that phase-one project that that developer has done in the, kind of the orangish area, will actually already be included in the base value, so, so a lot of that increment will come to the county school and, and city rather than be in the district, but there, there will be some, some other remnants there that do get included. So kinda getting down to the nitty-gritty on this project, though, one, again, that's the impetus for this project, it's about a $13 million project. Those other two projects, we bring the total value to 25 million. Again, the request is for that one project only. That's what the city's supporting. We, as of right now, do not support using TIF on either of the other two projects, and as part of our approval process in March, I mean, that'll really become cemented. So again, it's our goal to really focus on that first project, providing the housing in downtown. That total TIF request then, to get to that $13 million total investment, they have a TIF request of 1.6 million. That includes a demolition of the building, some of the site work that they need to do, and a few other features of the area. Again, it's really, we've looked at their pro forma and where we're at. I mean, we do feel comfortable and supportive that in order to make this work, that that 1.6 million is a true need and gap. The last three bullet points there, just talk a little bit about the taxing impacts. Right now, the base value of that district that's proposed is just a little over $5 million. You know, rough estimate of the current taxes there cumulatively are $100,000. The stabilized taxes after the, all three projects are completed, you know, will see go from that 100,000 to 250,000. And then those sub-bullet points there, you know, again, that 100, that 100,000 that's there already will continue to go to the taxing entities. The portion of that, that third project I mentioned that will be included in the base value will, will be captured as well. So we're probably actually gonna see a slight increase from 100 to 125,000 for the city school and county combined. Then the rest of that, that roughly 125 to 150,000 increment will go to reimbursing that 1.6 million in cost. With that, you happy to answer any questions? Uh, with that, um, you happy to answer any questions, uh, before jumping to the next one? Again, Kevin and Norm are here, so all of you have questions directed to them.
Any questions on that project?
There's a one question, and I'm curious, you, you bring up the value added by these other projects that you're not including in the TIF and are not supporting for a TIF. Do you bring that information up to us strictly to show what the economic development impact is of, of the overall project, or?
Sure. I mean, that's, that's definitely part of it, and I, I want to grab, uh, my map as well. I mean, because the district is drawn as such and includes those projects, our project plan will include, uh, details on all three, and, and ultimately, all three work together kind of on the financial side up there. So, it's just important to know that, that, that 250,000 is, is really the cumulative increment from all three of those projects. It will only go towards the 1.6 million that this project needs.
So, is there an argument that the other two projects wouldn't proceed without the TIF? I'm just trying to make sure I understand.
Sure. Well, let me, um, maybe kind of explain it this way. Um, you know, we really view Projects 1 and 2 in particular as kind of a, uh, group project, as in, you know, a single developer, they want to do these projects in phases, and they're really kind of dependent on each other in terms of Phase 1 needs to occur, Phase 2 needs to occur. Um, I don't know if I want to put these guys on the spot, but is it fair to say that, I mean, it's the two projects together have to go together, or, or neither go together, and that's why they're included in the TIF?
You have to come up and identify yourself, I'm sorry.
Norman Drake, Legacy Developments. Um, I think the answer to your question-
Could you speak into the mic, please?
I think, I think the answer to your question is that the reason they're included is there wouldn't be enough increment base in order to pay back the TIF, um, over that period of time. So, we had to widen the boundary and make it dependent upon ourselves to do not only the one project, but do the second project as a market rate project, which will not immer the benefits of the TIF.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions on that project? Okay, we go on to the next one?
Sure. Um, I think most of you, maybe with Mrs. Bender being the exception, were, um, heard our presentation in 2012 on TIF 16. Uh, that was a project, uh, an area of town that's really, I'll, I'll get to a picture in a second, looked like it's looked for 70 years, it's just, it was between two railroad tracks, never developed, it became kind of a construction storage area. Um, but we ultimately, uh, found a project, uh, Don Dunham at the time came up with a project that would work there, it needed TIF to really, uh, address some significant site challenges there with grade and rubble and so forth. They proposed a 80 unit rent-to-own housing project similar to others that they have done around Sioux Falls, and projected a $12 million investment. And that project has been stalled for, you know, those two and a half years since we approved that project. Uh, Ryan Reitz and Todd Meyer Henry are spearheading an effort there to, uh, relight that project. They have tweaked it quite a bit, and as you see here, you know, you had 80 units before, now you're looking at 200 units of, uh, of an apartment project, and then there is gonna be a portion here that'll still be a 40-plus or single-family developable lots. But you see that that total investment has jumped from 12 million to 20 million to complete this project. Um, here's a picture of that area. Um, the upper left of that picture, this orientation is, is John Morrell, and then kind of the major road to the left is Cliff Avenue. So, that, that's a property you see, again, it's, uh, development happened all around it, you can kind of see where the two railroad tracks would have gone through. Um, that's a rendering of the apartment portion that'll fit in that area. Um, so, kind of want to tell you where things are with that project now. Uh, again, the TIF 16 plan had, uh, roughly $2 million in eligible expenses listed, it's probably closer to 4 million, uh, total that would be eligible, um, but we only included 2.2, and, and I exposed the scope of this project's change out a little bit. Working with the developers on their pro forma, uh, 2.8 million is, is kind of the number where the project goes from feasible to non-feasible, and that's why we're working with them on, on supporting that amount as well. So, we're still in the analysis phase with them there, um, but if we do go from, uh, that 2.2 million to 2.8 million, it requires an amendment to the TIF, and anytime there's an amendment, we have to go through a, a similar process as we do for the approval. So, that's kind of why we're treating it the same way. A couple, uh, final points on this one, I, I think one of the benefits of this is, is we're getting a much larger project, we're fulfilling more of a need. Um, and as I show you here in the taxes, it actually, um, really won't affect anything as how, as far as how taxes were going to be distributed originally, but because of an increase in the increment, we actually think that this TIF district can be, uh, shorter, and that deferred benefit that Darren referred to would actually come to fruition sooner. So, to get just a technical for a second, uh, those are kind of the, the current base dollars, a very small, almost, almost negligible, uh, taxable amount there. Um, and again, I see a title there, that should be 170,000, um, with the original increment, and then if this project goes forward as projected, it would actually up that by about 100,000 to, to 270,000. So, again, another project, um, both of these, we, we believe in a lot, answer questions on this one now as well.
Are there any questions on this one project? Okay. How about Sadie? Thank you for your presentation, thank you for your time, and educating us again on TIFs.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Item number 11 is consider a resolution to reduce the number of secure beds available in the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center. Jamie Grabett.
Jamie Grabett, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center.
Good morning, Jamie.
Um, due to the efforts of the Juvenile Detention Alternative Initiatives and working with, uh, many partners in the community, we've been able to reduce the number of beds needed at the detention center. Uh, for 2014, our total daily average population was 20 juveniles. Um, you were provided a data sheet that shows how we've been reducing those, uh, bed days and, and what our average daily populations were. Today, when I left the center, we had 12 juveniles in the center, one of which was a Minnehaha County juvenile predisposition stage, the rest were paying us to use those beds, so. Um, we're asking to close off 14 beds of our current 54-bed secure area, reducing our cap to 40 beds, five of which are, uh, observation rooms for suicidal-type kids. We would, uh, construct a wall with a new door to block off those 14 rooms, and then it'd be available for county storage and, and staff training for us as well.
Are there any questions for Jamie on this? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a motion?
I'll second.
A motion and a second. And this will, um, a resolution to reduce the number of secure beds in Corrections, the, the Regional Juvenile Corrections Center. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Others opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you.
Item 12, consider a motion to authorize the purchase of corrugated metal culverts, guardrails, bridge steel decking, grater blades, galvanized sheet piling, and steel piling from True North Steel from a contract competitively bid and awarded by Beetal County on January 6th, 2015. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning again, Commissioner. Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent. We are requesting authorization to purchase from the Beetal County bid for culvert and bridge materials. We've had a good January relationship, we've done this many years in the past, and True North Steel continues to provide a good product. Uh, this bid would be, uh, the bid prices enclosed would be good through January 6th of 2016 for a year. And, uh, I guess, I can ask questions, or?
Any questions on this?
Request approval.
Motion for authorization to purchase off of a, another county's bids. Is there a motion?
Motion for approval.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item 13 is consider a motion to authorize the purchase of two truck chassis from Nus, Noos Truck, and, of Minnesota, in the amount of 236,516.42 from a contract competitively bid and awarded by the State of Minnesota. Shannon Schultz.
Hi, thank you, Cindy. Closer related to item number seven, so it's reasonable to assume that this will be deferred one week, I do want to say one thing, and that is, uh, Chapter 4, the Guidelines for the County Department Heads, talks about vehicle maintenance replacement transfer policy. Uh, under item 2 of that policy J, it says that, uh, if the equipment is eight years old or is in service of 150,000 miles or more, it's eligible for replacement, whichever comes first. And then there's a little caveat that says specialized equipment, such as heavy highway construction equipment, may require the use of customized replacement guidelines. The trucks that would be phased out with purchasing the new trucks would meet both those criteria thresholds of eight years and over 150,000 miles. I also want to add that, the trucks that are failing now, basically, is, is due to rust, and the new truck bodies that we would be purchasing are stainless steel, we would get assumably about 3,000 hours or 10 years of use out of a stainless steel sander, and then the plow truck chassis, we pretty much get, are getting, historically is showing 135,000 miles before they get into that temporary status of being used as reserve truck and/or then the, uh, the water truck before departing our fleet, so.
Okay, thanks, Shannon. Is there any questions, or is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to defer till next week.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second to defer for one week. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Shannon. Item four-
Whoops, Commissioner Banda had a comment.
Shannon, when you come back next week, give me a definition that you have for equipment versus vehicles, because there's a policy in that, or there's a term in that policy that addresses vehicles. I would consider these vehicles not equipment.
Okay, they'll do.
Thank you.
Item 14, consider a motion to approve a resolution to remove certain load limits on bridge structures 50-294-070, 3.6 miles west and 1 mile south of Sherman, and 50-299-080, 1.1 miles west and 1 mile north of Garrettson, and set a legal load. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning again. The Highway Department is, uh, completed one final bridge reconstruction project for 14 construction season, and structural repairs, which were recommended on a bridge inspection report on the other bridge. The structure repairs have been reviewed by a structural engineer and are referred, referenced in the enclosed letter recommend, recommending the removal of the load limits. So, now we're requesting the load limits to be formally removed by resolution for the two structures Cindy mentioned and listed in the memo. Both are on township roads, and I believe if you use your Dropbox, you can access those hyperlinks that are included in those tables.
And that's nice. Very nice.
I will add that, uh, Structure 294070, uh, that was an HDR project, that was, uh, they're the designer and engineer, so, and then the other one was done with in-house repairs. Uh, the in-house repairs cost us a total of $500. So, that's nice to get that off the, the posted system.
Okay, Commissioner Kelly?
What are legal limit, load limits?
Basically, 20,000 an axle is legal loads. The legal loads are defined differently per different truck, and it's a little complicated, uh, but generally speaking, an 80,000 pound gross vehicle weight semi is a legal load. Seven, or 50 feet trailer, uh, with a tractor. Other legal loads can go up to 96,400, depending on the truck configuration and axles, but they're, they're legal loads, um, not requiring a permitted travel on our roadways as well as the state of Iowa, the state of South Dakota.
Does that, does that have anything to do with that legislation that, uh, transportation is looking at to, to raise the legal load limits?
Yes, absolutely, that would be not good for our county system, or any other system.
So, theoretically, that'd bring us from 80,000 to 95,000, and then we go back to having to post the bridges, is that correct?
That is correct. If that were to go down-
Thank you.
You're right, that would, that would cause a lot more bridges to be posted, and then, you know, it's a new set of design standards, so it would take a long time to phase in those new design standards as the bridges were replaced.
Top security for you guys.
Any other questions for Shannon? Uh, we have a motion, is that the one we're at here? We have a motion and a second to defer for one week. Oh, sorry. We need, we need a motion on the bridge, sorry.
I'll move that. I'll, I'll move to remove the load limits.
I'll second it. I have a motion and a second to consider a motion to approve the resolution to remove certain load limits. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Item number 15, consider a motion to approve a resolution to set speed limits on various county and township roads within Minnehaha County. Shannon Schultz.
Good morning again. Uh, this is for Commissioners and Bender's benefit. About two years ago, the state of South Dakota, uh, changed their signed reflectivity standard, it's actually a national standard. Recognizing that was an unfunded mandate, the state came forward with a signed replacement project county-wide. All of our townships have signed up as well. Uh, we're well in the middle, almost towards the end of design, replacing all of our county signage. So, as part of that, Ultech Engineers is the consultant hired by the state, they have done an inventory of every single sign on county and township roads. Through doing that, it was identified that some of our speed limit postings are not legitimized through adoption and recognition by this commission. So, for the most of these 12 items included in this memorandum and commission item, most of those are just basically housekeeping and cleanup. We discovered some speed zones that, that weren't previously approved. So, uh, well, there's, in, in response to some, some public concerns, we did another speed study, and that was for, uh, items nine through 12, uh, to come up with a revised posting, uh, on Ellis Road. There are city limits on both sides, both those sides are posted at 45. Our speed study verified that 45 is the correct posting, and so, between those, 11, and then item number 10 is on a township road. The bridge I just mentioned, that assigned restriction for loading is going to be removed, that's the HDR bridge over there by Sherman. Uh, during the design of that project, HDR identified the need to have reduced speed posting at that location. So, those are in essence items 1 through 12 encompassing this request.
Commissioner Kelly? On, on 6, 7, 8, and 9, are there, are there, are there signs posted now that are what? Are they 45?
6, 7, 8, and 9-
Right around the Ellis area.
Yes. Um, there's no postings actually, well, item 12 there is, is the, uh, new speed zone that we determined to be correct, and those are currently posted now, and so we're just really cleaning them up with resolution because that's how it's posted today.
12.
12, no, 12 is a new posting based on-
12 is a new posting?
Yes.
So, are you saying 6, 7, 8, and 9 are already posted at 45?
Down to 25.
But we've not taken official action to enforce that?
That's correct.
And the, and the speed is still, the average speed is still 55, is that what I read?
Uh, I, I would say Commissioner Kelly, since I drive that quite frequently, that you obey the speed zone in that Ellis area, because if you don't, you're gonna get picked up. I've talked to lots of people that have been ticketed going through on that Ellis Road. It's 45 in the town area, it's 25, and then it gradually goes back up to 45 again, and they frequently patrol that area for that reason.
That's correct. So, the answer to your question, Mr. Kelly, is yes.
Where did I read? I thought somewhere in here we had, uh, average speed, uh-
That was part of the speed study?
Oh, here it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, 9 and 12, okay, thank you.
9 is the southern portion, yes. All right.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Shannon regarding the speed limits? Is there a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
No, a motion and a second to approve the resolution to set the speed limits on various county and township roads. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Shannon.
Item number 16, consider a motion to designate the Minnehaha Messenger as a legal newspaper for Minnehaha County. Recent name change from Hartford Area News. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, you'll recall back on January 6th at the first meeting of the year, and that you have to designate three legal newspapers in Minnehaha County, and the papers you designated at that time were the Hartford Area News, the, excuse me, the Argus Leader, and the Dell Rapids Tribune. Uh, we have since been notified that the, um, Hartford Area News is changing their name to the Minnehaha Messenger, and after consultation with, um, Kirsten, we both agreed that it would be advisable to have that official name change recognized within our minutes, and that you do concur that, yes, the, specifically that the Minnehaha Messenger is one of the yes, specifically that the Minnehaha Messenger is one of the official newspapers of the county, and we understand that that change of the newspaper will officially happen with the February 5 issue of that publication. So we would ask for you to designate the Minnehaha Messenger as one of the three legal newspapers of the county. They're recognizing that name change.
Is there a motion?
Motion for approval. Second.
A motion and a second to make that name change of the newspaper. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 11 is an update and status report on the 90th legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, I'll be very brief because I know you have a busy morning still ahead of you, and that we'll just go over a couple bills. As you know, I am going to be heading for peer later on today. One of the association bills from the County Commissioners Association that will be up tomorrow is Senate Bill 102, and that is the bill you discussed earlier in the TIF presentation that would give the taxing entity an opportunity to weigh in and participate in that process. And that's up tomorrow in Senate Tax at 10 o'clock. And that, one of the things that, you know, just for a point of information, you know, the question was asked, how much property tax does the county depend on? You know, the 2015 budget, property tax represents 57% of our anticipated revenue to support that 2015 budget. And that, as you know, that because of the property tax limitation and all of the other constraints, we are limited to what we get from new construction and the CPI allowance, which is either 3%, the CPI, whichever is less. In 2014, we got to use a whopping 1.4% for CPI adjustment. And as you know, we've been notified recently that going in for next year's budget calculations, that's gone up to an astounding 1.5%. So not a lot of give on the property tax side, and that's one of the reasons I think county commissions across the state view the TIF issue as an important deal because of the already limited circumstances you have on property taxes in the first place. So that's up tomorrow. There is a couple interesting bills up there for the wheel tax. One is to revise, it's Senate Bill 149. It would give the county the ability to raise the maximum allowed on any given vehicle from its current $16 up to $48. It would still stay at $4 a wheel, but what it attempts to do is to capture some of the, excuse me, to capture vehicles and trailers that have more than four wheels on it. The other one is-
Ken, is that a, I mean, they do, four axles do more damage than two axles?
No, wish Shannon was here.
I mean, I hate to take up any time, but it's, because we'll get blowback on that, I know that.
We didn't submit the bill. It's just, we just saw it's out there, so.
It's interesting.
The answer to your question, Mr. Kelly, is it's all about the vehicle loading. For example, a semi usually has 120 pounds per square inch in the tire pressure, which is directly, you know, transferring that load to the pavement. And so what you have is a shear force, basically a scissors effect of that high pressure next to a non-
Without the science lecture. It was a yes or no.
It's about load and pavement. So the more tires, the more you spread out the load.
Thank you.
And then another one, Senate Bill 79, it just gives the counties the option to exclude trailers from the imposition of the wheel tax right now. Right now, there's a, the way the law is, is that all the vehicles listed under a certain part of the statute are subject to the wheel tax. This gives you the ability to carve out trailers if you so desire. And that, excuse me, Senate Bill 78, that was one I think Robert was touching base with you earlier. It's an act to authorize counties or medical providers to recover inmate healthcare costs from third-party insurers. Basically, what it says is that if there's a county inmate that needs medical services, the medical provider will first attempt to try to collect from any third-party insurance that might be out there before coming to the county to try to collect on that bill. That passed out of Senate local government, six to zero with an amendment. And that, so, and then what Shannon was just talking about earlier about speed zone, there's a House Bill 1121 to just let townships set their own speed zones on township roads. There is a notification process, you know, that they have to notify us when they did that, but that would take that function out of the hands of the county commission and give it to the township board of supervisors. So like I said earlier, I will be going to peer some of the other association bills that are still hanging out there. Is one about, you'll recall fireworks. That was to give counties the same ability to regulate the discharge of fireworks as the city has, and that right now, that's going to, that's been referred to House local government. Some of the other association bills that passed out, such as the property tax limitation changes, that bill was not filed, and that, for sponsorships. And then some of the, one of the other bills that we had an interest in was withdrawn by the sponsor, which was a bill about the cost of legal defense for inmates in state correctional facilities. So that's been withdrawn from the prime. So really, the only association bill that's hanging out there that we'll be working on is this TIF bill. And the rest of the bills that may pop up are merely the association playing defense on bills that have a county flavor to them, but none that we have specifically requested be advanced.
Any questions for Ken?
Just a comment on that.
Commissioner Kelly?
There were no alcohol bills introduced. And the group that was, not the SDACC, but the group that was really trying to put together something, is looking towards an initiated measure. So that's probably where, if anything's going to come to resolve. We still haven't interested, I think, because we want to make sure we're at the table on the drawing of the thing, but it'll probably come through an initiated measure unless Senator Brown is successful with his, I won't comment, but his bill.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ken? All right, thanks, Ken. Have a good trip.
Item 18 is Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Are there any liaison reports? You have, oh, Commissioner Kelly?
I got one. Barry Dunn assessment deal is going on right now that they've had very good turnout, I think, and basically, they're ready to move to the next phase of the project, which will be an action plan so that they can get some budget numbers to work with and priorities to start working with, which will be good before our, coming before our budget hearings. But that's in process. The ShoreTel phones are in the museum and are mostly configured, they haven't quite gone online yet. I think that completes the ShoreTel. Can you tell me, is the ShoreTel done for the entire county then with the, or at least the onsite, on-campus phones?
I'll have to check. I think we have, we may have one department that's still out there, but we're almost all done with ShoreTel.
Okay. Any other liaison reports?
I have two just quick ones. I was contacted by two different outside organizations this past week. One was called the Coalition Against Bigger Trucks. They're a national grassroots organization, and I think the reason I'm getting these phone calls is because Senator Thune is on the Transportation Committee this year. This grassroots organization is a group that is against increasing lengths and axles on over-the-road trucks. And they're just going out looking for support, and we're, you know, obviously trying to educate us. I have more literature on them. It's actually increasing the length of semis and increasing, going from like two trucks carrying to three trucks, or three loads behind, and just increasing that. So I have a lot of interesting literature, if you're interested, and I did bring some of that with me today. And the other one that I talked to was called Go Rail. It's also a nonprofit group that supports freight railroads and rail supply countries, companies across the state of South Dakota. And we do have some important rails going through the state of South Dakota, so that's why they touched base with us again. Again, I have contact information and some literature if you're interested, so.
Item 19 is new business.
Any new business? Any old business? Okay. Look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel. So moved. There's a second. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Meeting adjourned.